Chris will motion, may I get a second?
I'll second.
Matt will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say? Motion carries five oh. Approval of the minutes, it is recommended that the minutes of the July twelfth, twelve twenty twenty one regular board meeting be approved as presented. May I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Janet will motion. May I get a second?
Second.
Chris will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say? Motion carries five oh. It is recommended that the minutes of the July twenty sixth twenty twenty one special board meeting be approved as presented. May I get a motion?
I'll motion.
George will motion. May I get a second?
Second.
Janet will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say? Motion carries five oh. Okay, statements from the public. The first person is Aaron Benton.
Is this where you would stand for this?
Yes, sir.
Fine podium? Alright, good evening, my name's Aaron Benton. I'm a farmer and a seed corn salesman from Rockport. And I'm coming here to talk to the board about the future of the agricultural program here at South Spencer High School. Several of the practices and fundamentals that I use every day in my seed corn business and on the farm, I learned right here at South Spencer High School when we, my junior year, when we started the ag program. Took those practices to Vincent's University in Purdue, polished those skills up, came back to Rockport, Indiana, where agriculture was prevalent, started farming and started seed corn business. Taught farmers how to grow more corn, as they grew more corn, I increased my business. Now I've got the fourth largest distribution dealership in the United States with agricultural hybrids. That wouldn't have been possible if I wouldn't have had a full-time ag teacher here to help me grow my business and learn how to run a business when I was here. So I thought before I'd come here, I would talk, call around, talk to some other school boards, principals, search of, you know, Facebook pages. The only other school I could find around here that doesn't have a full-time ag teacher, an FFA teacher with that, is Wood Memorial in Oakland City. Now, that's kind of the rural schools, I'm sure some in Evansville probably don't. But if all those other schools are doing it, I thought, man, why are they doing it? It didn't take me long to, my own heart to figure it out. They're betting on agriculture because the future of agriculture is very bright. And you all know, most of you all lived here, I think, your whole life. Spencer County is a very pro agriculture community. The farmers here are some of the greatest, we have some of the best land in America. According to the Ag Census I looked up, the farmers here in Spencer County spend roughly seventy-five million dollars a year on ag inputs that gets, that is put back into this community. So, you know, farmers have been innovators for a long time. You can ask any old farmer, when you talk to him, he went from plowing a horse, getting one acre a day, to having a tractor that drives itself and plowing acres an hour. So I think that agriculture is here to stay in Spencer County. And as farmers grow bigger, they're gonna need strategic partners to help them grow their business because they just can't manage, all the duties are in front of them every day. So I'm just here to say, why don't we promote what we have? You know, I would love to be here talking about how we're gonna have a hospital or an Amazon fulfillment center, but I just don't know that that's what we have. We have agriculture here in the community, it's gonna be here for a while. If kids go through this school, get a good fundamental education, agriculture can take that to Purdue, they can come back here to Spencer County, start a family, and send kids to this school corporation, which is a win for all of us because that's what we need. So, I'm just here to ask the school board and Dr. Rutherford to consider, as you make your new budget for the, for the twenty twenty-two school year, to consider adding a full-time ag teacher. I mean, everybody that works in agriculture, as agriculture knows, is a very passionate business. And it's a business that people are in that are very loyal. And I think for the program to succeed, we need a young kid that's got a lot of passion that'll teach those kids. And the future of agriculture is bright in Spencer County. And I just ask the school board to vote on agriculture to keep it as bright as it can be for the future citizens of Spencer County. Thank you for your time and consideration, Board. Dr. Rutherford?
Thank you, Mr. Benton. Next person is Tom Nichols.
Good evening. My name's Tom Nichols, I just recently moved back to Spencer County, lived here for several years, moved away to become an ag teacher, and now I'm back. I wanted to, I had to move away long enough to realize that I need to come back home. But I'm here to answer tonight, what is an ag teacher? A person can ask that question to a hundred different people and get a hundred different answers. However, anybody who has had the opportunity to be one, or any who has been mentored by a caring ag teacher, can all agree on a few points, not the least of which is that they're all essential. I'm a South Spencer FFA alumnus, having been a member for four years, two of those years serving as a chapter officer, and one year on the District Ten FFA Officer Team. One of the first tasks I was assigned as a young freshman was to learn and recite the FFA Creed. The FFA Creed is a two-minute speech written in nineteen twenty-eight by E.M. Tiffany. It begins, "I believe in the future of agriculture with a faith born out of words." A little bit further on, it goes on to say, "I believe in less dependence on begging and more power in bargaining, in a life abundant and enough honest love to help make itself for others as well as myself, in less need for charity and more of it when needed, in being happy myself and playing square with those whose happiness depends upon me." It was in that very first assignment that I realized that I was gearing up to learn way more than just technical knowledge. Did I learn the technical knowledge that the likes of how an E-sixty thirteen welding electrode welds differently than E-seventy-eight electrode? Or how it is by the action of microorganisms in the rumin, that allow ruminants to digest enough to digest rough forage? Or even how to create a basic budget? Yes, absolutely, I did learn these things. But I learned so much more in and outside of the classroom that the technical learning could almost be described as a by-product. At the encouragement of a few key people, I pursued a degree in agriculture education at Western Kentucky University. Knowing that an ag degree could work for me more than just coming home to teach agriculture, I set out for Bowling Green. In the quote-unquote "real world" after college, I started my career at Bill Temple's Spine Operation to gain some real experience. I had no background in hogs, but my background in agriculture helped me to thrive there. After a few years at Temple Farms, an opportunity to teach high school agriculture in Grenada, Colorado, presented itself. It was in Grenada that I fully appreciated just what an ag teacher truly is. The ag teacher is the first to events and the last to leave. The ag teacher is the bus driver, the coach, the mentor, the one who will answer the phone at eleven P.M. on a Sunday night because a student is experiencing writer's block for a prepared speech. The ag teacher is the one who will perform a necropsy on a stillborn calf to help console a student who just can't figure out what they did wrong. The ag teacher is the one encouraging freshman members to stand up in front of an audience and recite the FFA Creed to a crowd. The ag teacher shares in the joys of winning a contest, but also shares in the pain of losing. Each win and even each loss is a testimony to the hours each student poured into their project or contest. Clocks on the wall are nice, but they're only the tip of an enormous iceberg of hard work and dedication of the student, all under the careful guidance of an ag teacher who cares. The ag teacher is a full-time and even double-time position that cannot be taken lightly for all students, all the time. We cannot, that you have the support of the community, we want to see it done right. Thank you.
Mr. Nichols, you've got some experience if you worked for Bill Temple and pigs, did you?
Yes, sir.
He was pretty big, he picked a pretty big outfit there at one time.
Yes, he was. And I was, I had the opportunity to work at his, at his high, so I was in nutrition, I was at the Borstud, did everything.
I remember.
So, thanks.
Sir.
Thanks, sir.
Take a copy of your, take a copy of your.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll get boots, thank you.
Welcome back.
Next person is Katie Richard.
Good evening. I am Katie Richard, and I'm not here to talk about ag or ag that day tonight. I am here to talk about a school board member. And this school board member and I have had talks previously to the election about my concerns that I had with her running as a school board member. Hidden agendas, why would a North Spencer teacher want to run on our school board to be a school board member? She assured me that there was no hidden agenda. So therefore, I thought, well, let's go ahead and give it a chance. I thought, you know, her husband was retiring. She does have a brother who teaches here. But let's give it a chance to see how this goes. I have since found out that she is a member of the CTA group who also represents the South Spencer teachers. I feel like I've been kind of betrayed a little bit. She has voted against recommendations for the varsity basketball coach, our athletic director, the high school principal. These are all recommendations given to the board. Assistant principal, our superintendent, on a transfer of the middle school basketball coach, the varsity high school assistant. I don't think this has ever happened, but then again, we've never had a South, a North Spencer teacher on the South Spencer school board. She's also voted against the recommendation of our South Spencer high school principal, assistant principal, high school special education teacher, and our superintendent for a special needs teacher at the high school level. And we know that there's a shortage of teachers for special ed throughout the state of Indiana. I don't think this has ever happened either. This is also when we changed batch, did we change the batch hiring to singling out, doing them individually? I've done my due diligence, I'm going back and reviewing. I believe we had to do those singly at that time. We've heard from the North Spencer Teachers Union Director, Veronica Hobbs, who's also South Spencer's union rep, three different times, taking shots at one of our school board members and our superintendent. This happened the first three months of the six months into this teacher's representation in the school board. We've had our first unfair labor practice filed against South Spencer Corporation, filed in the first three months of this person being on our school board. I've done my research, and I believe this is the first time in four years, no, this is the first time, these claims, sorry. These claims were four years ago. She wasn't on the school board then. And it just happens when she gets on the school board, these claims come about. Makes me wonder, you know, she's part of the CTA group up north with Veronica Hobbs. I can kind of put two and two together. Also, three minutes, three months into this teacher being on the board, there was discussion, she wanted to remove the superintendent. You once told me there was no hidden agenda. Do you remember that conversation we had? I hope so, because I do. She also voted no to our head football coach. A.D., principal, assistant principal, and superintendent's recommendation on hiring of a middle school seventh grade football coach. Another person that's been twenty-plus years in volunteering. Maybe she knows more about those sports than the head coaches do that recommended the person for the job. Maybe she has superpowers now that we don't know about. She played a key role in removing two of our young coaches this past spring. Think that was the first. She's voted against recommendations for our teachers, A.D., coaches, principals, superintendent, but she doesn't mind voting yes for a cousin to be hired. I'm not really sure how I feel, because you convinced me when we had this discussion that maybe voting for you was a good thing, and I did that. Now I'm not so sure it was a good thing. I'm kind of regretting that in just the first eight months of your seat on the board. I've got good record, I've got good knowledge too, that you didn't pick up the board packet whenever you ran for school board. I'm sorry to hear that too. And maybe you're sorry that you're on the school board now. Did you really want to run for school board? Or did somebody want you there? Thank you for your time.
I'd like to clarify, there was, on the opposing votes, she wasn't the only opposing vote on that, on a couple of those recommendations to hire.
I didn't direct you to that, thank you.
I know, but I was just wanting to clarify that.
Okay, superintendent's report?
Just kind of giving you an update on ADM count. Last February, we were at one thousand one hundred and six. And when we do our ADM, it's not timed yet, but Joey's gonna wait until he sees the whites of their eyes. That's why I always tell him, you know, what do we count? And right now, we're at one thousand and ninety-nine. So we're down about seven kids from last year. And that would have been in February if we were out there. There's also been an uptick in cases in COVID and quarantines as well. We're gonna move to just highly recommending that our staff and students wear masks. So at this time, we're gonna move to highly recommend that. We're gonna continue to monitor the situation. We'll still keep in data contact with the Health Department as well. Continue to clean, continue to social distance, do everything that we did last year. We're gonna go ahead and move forward with the task force, we talked about that, we're from Valen and you're in the Catalyst Group, and so we'll put together a couple of people to, you know, be on the task force. That's when we talked about doing the selling or doing something with that twenty-seven acres up on the other side of the football field, on the west side.
Are you looking for nominations?
Yes, I would love to have at least board members as well, and your thoughts and ideas as far as people who would be, you know, good for that, represent South Spencer in a good light, but also has a different knowledge base than just myself or people in the community as well. So we'll be reaching out, so please send me any of your thoughts or ideas that you have for that. If you, if you want to just turn, this will take real quick, not very long at all. Some of this information I shared with our teachers, or this information I shared with our teachers on our orientation day, which I thought went outstanding, I thought it'd keep. Buddy Berry hit a home run, and he was very much, he was very enjoyable. I'm also gonna say the start of the school year has been great. Nothing but positives so far this school year. Some of the summer projects that were completed, a high school auditorium. So when you guys are done, please go take a look at the auditorium, it's done now. High school locker rooms downstairs, public restrooms right down here by the basketball gyms are done now. The middle school has A.C. in their gym, several rooms at the middle school, the floors were replaced, new oven at the high, or at the middle school, lunch ladies love that. The entrance at Loose Elementary, there was flooring, there was a buckle up in the hallway at Rockport Elementary, that's been fixed. It says multi, I mean, multi-purpose room carpet, it's actually all these rooms were replaced, even downstairs, the carpet. Football practice field. And then every four years, we always seal the parking lots, reseal and stripe. I was at another corporation just yesterday, and their parking lot's just shambles. And at the time, I'm not driving, all they have to do is just reseal that and take care of it, people never get that way. So, we had our I-Learn scores, so just kind of wanted to give you. Last year was a challenge across the board, and the I-Learn test was a challenge for all of our kids. But just wanted to show with the state average. The state average is in the little pink-ish color, and then the other color is South Spencer. This is third grade. State average is, you look at there, that's the E.L.A., the English portion of it, thirty-eight point seven. And then South Spencer, we were fifty-six. I'm not gonna go through each one of these, you know, by hand, holding hands, but you can kind of see how well we were doing there versus the state average. Again, you notice fourth grade, the same trend, higher than the state average. Fifth grade, above state average. Sixth grade, above state average again. Seventh grade, above state average. Eighth grade, above as well. And then also high school with their I-SE test. So it's just kind of a trend across. I'm gonna contribute that, you have to contribute that to the team effort across the board. That's aides custodian, that's everybody jumping in, pitching in. It's also gonna contribute that we've been in school, you know, one hundred and seventy-nine days last year. So, kudos to our faculty and staff, teachers and across the board, principals, administration, everybody else for what they were able to accomplish last year. And I am good.
Are you going to do the announcements of the Bobby Bruce? Or is that a little?
Yeah.
All right, the consent items. Approve the payable claim dockets and the accounts payable claims number four-four-seven-three through four-four-nine-one. Approve the monthly transfer from the education fund to the operations fund per board resolution. Grant permission to mail accounts payable claims prior to the September thirteenth twenty twenty-one board meeting. Accept the resignation of the following, approve to post the position and grant permission to hire Cassandra Meyer, South Spencer High School Special Education Aid effective August first twenty twenty-one. Approve South Spencer High School ECA transfers as present. May I get a motion?
I'll motion.
George will motion.
I'll second.
Chris will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say? Motion carries five oh.
And Melissa will back you up for just a second. We had permission to hire, and these are the names here that we will give permission to hire. And just so everybody knows, Bobby Bruce, that's gonna be special ed teacher at the high school. Emily Gilmore, high school chemistry teacher. Jessica Bell, Rockport Elementary Special Ed Aid. Sabrina Mead, Rockport Elementary Special Ed Aid. Haley Tomlinson, Rockport Elementary Second Grade Teacher. Sydney Kaiser, Rockport Elementary Special Ed Teacher. And Robin Heron, and that would be a South Spencer High School part-time custodian. Sorry about that, thank you.
Okay, administrative recommendations. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve to hire Tori Adams, South Spencer High School Special Education Aid. May I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Janet will motion. May I get a second?
I'll second.
Matt will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say? Motion carries five oh. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve to hire Sandy Bartlett as the South Spencer Middle School and High School Concessions Director. May I get a motion?
I'll motion.
George will motion. May I get a second?
Second.
Chris will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say? Motion carries five oh. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve to hire Clay Press, South Spencer High School and Middle School Athletic Supervision Team. May I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Janet will motion. May I get a second?
I'll second.
Chris will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say? Motion carries five oh. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve to hire Sarah Bush, South Spencer Middle School Cross Country Coach. May I get a motion?
I'm moving to rehire Sarah Bush as the cross-country coach.
Matt will motion. May I get a second?
I'll second.
George will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say? Motion carries five oh. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve to extend Anna Green, Loose Elementary Cook Day by half hour to serve breakfast in the classroom. May I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, George.
George will motion.
I'll second.
And Chris will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say? New business at the board?
Mr. Rutherford, are you aware that on Thursday, August the fifth, Veronica Hobbs, the ISTA representative, sent out an email to multiple schools voicing her displeasure of the Christian Education Association who was passing out chocolate bars to teachers? If you weren't aware, you're aware now. Her email is demanding that we immediately stop people from doing this because it would be a violation and an unfair labor practice to do so. Her quote is, is that by allowing this, it is a competing organization since the ISTA has exclusive representation and Christian educators' chocolate bars disguised with literature would be a U.L.P. I'm recommending that this board not allow the ISTA to infringe on the rights of our Christians' teachers to assemble and speak, alas, as allowed by the First Amendment. Our school corporation cannot bar all flyers or freedom of speech, which would be a violation of the First Amendment. I've said it in the past, and I'll continue to say it now. If Ms. Hobbs' actions are not in line with this school corporation, and any violation will be brought forth in a public meeting.
What ever, what email was that, that show?
It was, I was, I was given the email by someone, and I, I don't know. I wasn't privy to the email as a whole, but got the gist of it.
But what, what was it from?
It was from them, from, I guess, to multiple people. Basically saying that it was a violation to pass out these chocolate bars, so. I also have another. I was fortunate enough to recently attend a dinner with the Indiana Attorney General, Todd Rakita. The Attorney General has published a roadmap for who's your parents to express their legal rights to have a voice in their children's education. And this is the, this is a publication that was put out by the Attorney General. If anyone wants a copy of it, you can actually go to indiana.gov and request it. I just feel like it's important that parents understand and know that they have a right to participate in their children's education. This roadmap also explains parental consent and educational curriculum not aligned with Indiana school standards. That means that curriculum cannot be taught without parental consent related to the instruction that reveals or attempts to affect the feelings, beliefs, and opinions aimed toward human sexuality. If parents are dissatisfied with the school's curriculum, they may ask for a personal meeting with the school superintendent and may request further determination with the Indiana Department of Education. Students can't be asked to participate or express their personal feelings regarding controversial political groups or politically affiliated social groups without parental consent. Parents, I just need you to understand that you need to be involved in your children's everyday activities, what they're being taught. Talk to your children, look at their homework, pay attention to social media, talk to other parents, and don't be afraid to voice your concerns to our superintendent or our school board members. If you see things that feel wrong, they're probably wrong. In addition, I would also like to make a motion of this board that we make a policy that discriminatory teaching such as CRT and the sixteen-nineteen project be banned from this school system. I have a motion on the floor.
Chris has made a motion. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I like the, I think the philosophies that are trying to be taught in other areas of the country are alarming and should be alarming. Typically, what's happened historically, what happens in California or New York six to ten years later is here and are knocking on our back door. We've seen it before, and we'll see it again. I would second that motion, Chris.
Okay.
Well, I'd still like, like more information before I.
Can we table it for next month? There's a motion on, if you ask for what, take.
I would like more information regarding the CTR, and then read that more on that as well.
This really was something totally different.
Yeah. Can we make a motion and vote on this on September meeting? Is that okay?
So you're letting the, letting the motion go through without a vote, is that what we're doing?
Yes, and then just table it for now, and then come September, September thirteenth is our meeting, we can put it on the agenda to vote.
Okay, sure.
Is that okay?
I will get you guys more information on it. Okay.
I think a point of order is we need to verify with Robert's Rules of Order if a motion's been made and a second's been made. It may have to go to a vote and then be tabled.
Take it back to them.
So we may have to actually take a vote, and if it doesn't pass, push it to the next meeting or discussions. I'm not sure, but I believe that's how it works.
He could withdraw. He could also withdraw his motion and table. To, to, in order to table it.
Withdraw the motion until September.
I'll, I'll be happy to withdraw my motion until September.
Okay. That was September thirteenth is our next meeting on that, so for next month. Okay, there, there's a couple of things that I would like to make. I want to thank everybody for making the first couple of days of our school go as smoothly as it did. From our bus drivers, to our cafeteria workers, to our maintenance department, to our I.T. Anybody that I'm missing, I do apologize, and also to our teachers. They are the faces that our students see first of the day and at the end of the day. They are not only educators, but they are caregivers. They are mentors. I want to thank everybody for making the first three or four days go as smooth, as smoothly as it did. And I want you guys to know that you are greatly appreciated for all your efforts and your hard work and dedication to our corporation. The next regular meeting of the board will be Monday, September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, at six P.M. in the multipurpose room here at the high school. There will be a public hearing of the proposed final budget at five P.M. before the regular scheduled meeting. The time, I can't.
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty. May I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
A motion.
George will motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Chris will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same. Motion carries, excuse me, five-oh.
Ball sports kickoff starts at seven o'clock tonight in the gym.
Girls volleyball has their first scrimmage Thursday.
This Thursday?
Yep.
Pictures are Wednesday though, aren't they? Pictures of sports teams are Wednesday, like that was. And I was trying to, I had Brian double checky today because he had a death, so I got people going. Everybody's doing sports pictures, so.